It's the same as a face-to-face meeting. However, it's it's done virtually. So.
We're gonna have some fun here today, Ryan.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. So let me, I'll go ahead and share my screen and I'll kick over to you, Jill.
Got it. We do that right?
Yeah.
All right. Are we, are we rock and roll time?
But ma'am, go for it.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Good afternoon and welcome to the NIFA Town Hall. It's Aloha Friday and I want to, I just remind you of that because I don't want you to lose sight of all of the good that is around you. I'd like to extend some special aloha and gratitude to the members of our sister organizations that have joined us today on this, on the Zoom meeting. Your executive board has been very proud to bring to you these town halls every day this week, and I'd like to just give you an introduction there. You can see the photos. Kami Scott, our most esteemed president. Tom Michael, president-elect. Larry Holsberg, our secretary. Brock Jolly, he is our bean counter extraordinaire. This is our NIFA treasurer. Kevin Mayhew, our most stellar CEO, and I am Jill Judd, your immediate past president, and I'll be the moderator for today. Just a couple of words. It's been an incredible week and you know, I was thinking, the secret is absolutely out of the bag when it comes to NIFA members because I have seen and we have all seen proof that you can change on a dime when the chips are down. We found that out that we can all adapt pretty quickly when we need to find a new way of working. Our NIFA staff has been keeping us well informed of the work they're doing and they continue to do for us each and every day. And our speakers over the course of the week have delivered with passion. That is most typical of NIFA members. Okay, in the midst of all that is going on, I just want to also say that we appreciate your attendance here. I personally appreciate the fact that you have all stayed engaged and that you are always looking for ways to be informed and to grow as professionals. Also, thank you for taking care of your clients at this time that they really need you most. We, we are a strong industry because we do just that each and every day. Next week will look a little bit different. We'll talk about that toward the end, but I just want to give you a little bit of a heads up. We're going to move to a twice-a-week format. Monday and Thursday are the days. Mark your calendar. This will give you an opportunity to actually implement a lot of the ideas that you are finding relevant that you can use in your practice from these calls. Monday, Van Miller will be with us. No intros are needed for him, but essentially if you want to get pumped up to produce, you want to be with us on Monday. And Thursday, we'll be bringing you the Financial Security Alliance. And this is a three not-for-profit organizations group that came together to form the financial all within the financial services industry who came together to create the Financial Security Alliance. And the purpose of this new partnership actually answers a bunch of industry challenges that, that came about. And you'll recognize all of these. In fact, they would include raising the levels of financial literacy in American households. We're seeing that more now than ever, as a lot of folks are recognizing that they were very ill-prepared for this incident. Also raising awareness for career options in financial services. And providing what we like to think of as a clearinghouse for information for consumers. And this will combine content and member access. From the three associations that you see upon your screen, NIFA, Life Happens, and Nalba. This extraordinary collaboration is poised now to really build the financial security of American families at a time when most of them are incredibly keen to discuss their own financial situations, as many of you are recognizing today. The new consumer-focused website is www.financialsecurityalliance.org. I imagine Suzanne Kerouan could probably post that in the chat feature. If you're looking to get connected there. This new alliance will be governed by a steering committee that includes two representatives from each of the partner organizations you see on your screen. Okay, well, let's, uh, let's move on now from, from my general opening and I'd like to just explain a little bit about how things are going to run today. We would like this to be interactive. And the way we're going to handle that, so we don't have a lot of people trying to interject at the same time is just post your questions in the chat feature that's at the bottom of your screen. If you, if you post them there, we'll be watching. We have a couple of people that are checking that out and we will either direct you to the speaker and we'll interject that during talking time, whether that be with Kevin or Ryan. That will be fine. Don't be shy. We want to hear from you. If we don't answer your question here online, we'll answer it through email or some other, some other avenue, but we will definitely get to it. Maybe you can think about what one thing your business needs right now to navigate this situation that we're all in. Your NIFA Nation is here to give you support. We all want to help you succeed. So with that, I am going to hand the gavel over to our CEO, Kevin Mayhew. Here is the virtual talking stick, Kevin. Take it away. Let us know what's going on on your side.
All right. Thanks, Jill. And good morning or good afternoon, everybody. Again, thank you for joining us for our fourth of these Town Hall meetings as we're all navigating through the COVID-19 crisis. Just to give you a snapshot again to remind constant contact with, of policymakers here in Washington DC. And making sure that your voice is represented and they take into account again the, the good work that advisors do and how necessary your work is helping everyday Americans make sure they're financially prepared, especially in times like these when there's so much worry and confusion and the stock market's going up and down by a couple thousand points a day. And now more than ever, everyday Americans need to rely upon you. So just reiterating, we're on a number of task forces and committees, including working with FEMA, the White House. We get involved in their briefings every single day and we pass along pertinent information to you. And then we also pass on pertinent feedback to them as they're crafting federal policy. We are continuing to work with federal and state legislators as you've seen the work that we're doing with FinancialSecurity.org. So a little difference, different than Financial Security Alliance.org. FinancialSecurity.org/scams. You can see the work that we're doing again, helping to notify people in the general public about scams that are out there in times like this and provide them with resources to help them deal with it and point them to the latest scams that are going on around the country related to COVID-19. We are still open for business. Our staff is working feverishly 24/7. Again, to make sure we get the latest resources out to you all and communicate to you all as to what's going on in NIFA Nation and what's going on in the federal policy arena as it relates to you, particularly in this, this, this key time. Again, this month and next month, all of our meetings are going to be virtual. So it'll be a great opportunity for us to connect and continue to have the spirit of what a professional association does, and that's bringing people together and sharing information and speaking as a unified voice. Although it will continue to take place, we'll just do it in a virtual sense throughout the next couple of months. And some of you all may have seen the email that went out last night and we were notified by our host hotel, the Renaissance Hotel in Washington DC, that they are closing their doors temporarily, basically today through June 2nd. So that has required us to cancel the congressional conferences and in-person face-to-face meeting, May 19th and 20th. Again, the communication went out to everybody last night notifying you about that, but like NIFA always does, we're turning lemons into lemonade and we are going to turn that week, May 19th now through the 21st, so we've added a bonus day into NIFA Nation Impact Week. And so on Tuesday, May 19th, we will be doing our diversity symposium. We're just going to do it virtually, but it's a great opportunity for even more people to participate in this very meaningful program. On Wednesday, May 20th, we're going to do an advocacy in action webinar. Actually a Zoom meeting, so an interactive opportunity for folks to join in. But we'll hear an update again from our government relations professionals, consultants, and even some members of Congress as to what's going on as they get a chance to interact with, with each of you in a virtual sense. And then we're going to parlay that into, instead of us being, taking Main Street to the US Capitol in May, we are going to take Main Street to the district offices of our members of Congress in August, where they're on August recess. So we're going to really beef up what we've traditionally done in August, which are in district meetings and make it a much more organized, comprehensive approach and visit our congressional offices during the month of August, bringing Main Street again to their Main Street offices back in their districts and spreading the good word again as to what NIFA members are doing and letting policymakers know what they can do to help us better make sure that 90 million American families are better financially prepared for their futures. So more to come on that. And then if you happen to be a chapter leader, we are going to do a virtual chapter leaders meeting on Thursday, May 21st with our incoming Vice President for Member and Chapter Services, Corey Matthews, and the rest of our Member and Chapter Services team. So look for more information about that and the information will be coming in the next couple of weeks regarding those plans for NIFA Nation Impact Week, May 19th to 21st. If you happen to register and you were planning to go to the congressional conference, we will be sending you a separate communication talking about your refund, asking, you know, how you want to receive it, whether you want to get a check or we send it back to your credit card, et cetera, and letting you know about that process. And the very near future could be as early as today, but it might take us a couple of days to get our system set up for that. If you were going and you did register and you would like to, instead of receiving the $100 refund, you'd like to donate that to IFAPAC or to the War Chest to help with our advocacy efforts, we'd be glad, of course, to accept that donation. But for those who did register, we'll be in contact with you in the very near future, letting you know about that. So lots of stuff going on. You all also saw that the Senate has passed the CARES Act. It is now on the floor of the House. They're dealing with some floor shenanigans at the moment, but we expect that to pass the House of Representatives today and then be signed hopefully tonight or tomorrow by the President of the United States, sign that into law. Our government relations team, our lobbyists and our tax firm, Stepto Johnson, have been working on analyzing that 880-page bill and are coming up with tools for you all that summarize what the bill means to you as an advisor, how you can apply it to you and your practice, but also give you tools so you can help your clients understand again what's in this $2.2 trillion relief act and how they can take advantage of the resources that may be available to them. Again, we've been working on this thing since we got the initial draft. There were some changes that happened to the very last minute when the Senate was in negotiations late at night, day and a couple hours ago. We've been going through that to understand the caveats that are involved. And we'll make sure as soon as this thing gets signed into law, which we think will happen within the next 24 hours, we will shortly thereafter get the information out to you because we want to be timely and making sure you're better financially prepared yourself. But also you've got the tools and resources so you can better help your clients. Again, one of the advantages you get by being part of, of NIFA. So again, thanks for your support. Again, if you need anything, please contact us anytime. We're here for you like we always are. And to get together, we're going to get through this better and stronger than ever because as our tagline says, together we can take on anything. Back to you, Jill.
All right. Thanks so much, Kevin. You know, it's pretty amazing when you think about all the work they're doing behind the scenes for all of us. We are really staying up to the moment on how this can affect ourselves as producers and our customer bases. So thank you so much for our incredible staff for keeping us on track. Next up, we have Suzanne Kerouan, our Vice President of Marketing and Communications. And Suzanne, I know this is, this has been a really interesting time for you. You have stayed, you have stayed up hours on end for NIFA and you have our enduring gratitude. Take it away.
All right. Thanks, Jill. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and just, just do a recap for the week of what we've been doing. I think I mentioned earlier this week, in my first graduate degree is a master's in public health from Tulane University in infectious disease. And never did I think it was going to coalesce into my marketing career right at the same point when I happened to be working in, in a whole group that are deemed essential people. So it's been my pleasure to, I've been kind of trained for this. It's kind of nice to be called up and, and put to, put to the test. So a couple of things for the week, just to recap, we've been putting out new kits all week. If you haven't seen our FinancialSecurity.org consumer site, this is it. We put out a big press release that went out 9:00 AM today. We're getting all sorts of pickup and we really want to thank also Insurance Newsnet, who's done a tremendous job in supporting us through, through these times. What we're doing here is making sure that each day we're rolling out a new piece. So the scams piece is really what we put together. And we're adding to that on a regular basis, working with a lot of our coalition partners, our sister associations and whatnot to be able to be one, one, what we're calling a safe resource for consumers out there. In addition, yesterday we put together the small business one and released it. And for the first time, you're seeing our advisors come to work here and giving us, actually Jennifer Hodges is on the press release, but giving us some direct-to-consumer videos that are real-time talking about COVID-19 to really showcase without us having to say why you should join. This is what, you know, we're doing. This is what we're doing every day. NIFA shows up to work and it's the best way we can do it is just showcase our actual advisors in action. Today, we're going to release, we also have coming a retirement one. And then the next one will be on caregivers, older adults and, and multi-generational families. In particular, that's a real concern here on the long-term care aspect. So a lot of that material is coming out of our Limited and Extended Care Planning Center. But clearly people have a lot of concerns with maybe their older relatives, et cetera, who might be particularly hard-hit by COVID-19. So you'll see that coming out as well. And then we also did release this week a downloadable for you to give to your clients to talk about why they chose wisely in choosing you as a NIFA member. And also you could certainly pass it out to your prospects. And that's in both a printable form and an attachable email, kind of low file size form as well. And we will continue to update that and send out. So today, after this call, you're going to get a survey for the week. You're going to get one email that has all the resources in it, all the links in it. And Tom Hagen has given us some additional bonus kind of material as well to include. So look to your inbox for that today. With that, Jill, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
All right. Suzanne, thank you so much. As you can see, there is so much out there to support us in our work. NIFA is on the front lines in, in every way we look. We're now going to move into the, the meat of this meeting and I'm pretty excited about this. I get to introduce Ryan Penny. He's another one who hardly needs any sort of introduction because we all know him. First off, I'd like to say to Ryan, thank you for your military service. Your family has served, you have served, and we are all very grateful to all of our veterans out there in the United States. When I think about Ryan Penny, you know, a couple of things come to mind for me. He is an early adopter, unlike most of us in NIFA. He's absolutely an innovator. He's a family man. And he marches to a beat of a different drummer. But I have to say that with this, this tectonic shift that is happening in the way we are all trying to do business now, I have a feeling everybody wants to start marching in his parade. So it's sort of hilarious because the, the roosters have come home to roost, I guess is how they say that. Get ready for a technology storm from our past trustee and my friend, Ryan Penny. Ryan, we're so happy to have you on here. Save us. Tell us how to make it happen. We're, we're ready and we are all ears.
Well, Jill, thanks for the invite and the opportunity to speak to everybody today. And thanks for pointing out the military service. I think some of you who are on the call early may have heard that my son graduated from Army Basic Training yesterday, so ooh rah, Army Strong, as they say. And I know we've got a bunch of other Army vets and I was a Marine Corps veteran myself, so. With that in mind, the Marine Corps' kind of philosophy in life and, and in combat is improvise, adapt, and overcome any and all obstacles to successfully complete the mission. And so that's what we're going to talk about today is how you can do that in your own practice, how you can get involved right now, how you can leverage technology to keep your doors open virtually and how you can actually thrive in this time and grow your business when other people are struggling. And so let's just jump right in. I think one of the biggest challenges I've seen in the marketplace for agents and advisors and for other small businesses in general is this kind of fear of where do I begin and how do I start? And I would tell you that it's really easy if you take it in a very organized approach. The very first thing you need to decide is, are you going to take action or not? I think if you're on this call, the answer is pretty obvious. You've already decided to at least take some sort of action and that you want to, to take your business virtual if you can. The second thing you need to decide is how your current or previous, let's call it PC, pre-COVID versus the current COVID and then eventually the AC after COVID business model is going to look. Because the way that we did business six months ago, for sure, for most of us probably looks a lot different than the way we're trying to do it today. And will definitely look different than the way that we end up doing it in another six months. And so I would tell you that you need to decide kind of how you're going to make that shift. For many years, we've talked about utilizing technology, eapplications, e-delivery, online marketing to generate opportunities and leads. And I think that that's resonated well, but I don't think it's been implemented well. So let's start with the tools. Very first tool that you need to take your practice online is exactly what we're doing today. Some sort of video conferencing, desktop sharing presentation platform, whether that's Zoom, Uber Conference, GoToMeeting, doesn't really matter. Pick the one that you prefer. Pick the one that works for you and that, that you can understand and utilize. And then first and foremost, take some time and actually use it. You don't want to try to fumble through with, with the sales presentation if you've never used the software. I would tell you, set it up with your, your wife, your husband, your kids, your neighbor, your, your parents, your, your friends, whatever. Use it as a communications tool. Get comfortable with it so that when you're actually doing client presentations, you can effectively utilize the platform and help them get onto the platform and, and be able to interact with you successfully. The second thing I would tell you is that your environment is a major factor here. If you look at the screen and I'm not calling anybody out, but if you look at the screen, there's a lot of different backgrounds. There's a lot of different video views that you're seeing. And I think if you were just to take a quick eye and look at them, many of them you go, that doesn't look very great. Others you might go, that looks fantastic. And, and then you might say that some are maybe somewhere in the middle. I would tell you the key factor there is, you'll notice I have my blinds behind me closed. Backlight is a big issue. It makes it hard for the other people on the other side to see you. So I see somebody turn their head and looking around, right? Backlight is a big issue. If you can't be seen effectively, then it's going to distract your, your customers and your prospects that you're talking to when they're trying to interact with you on video. It's going to, it's going to make it hard for them to pay attention. And so it's really important for you to set that up. And so like Linda just got up and turned up her light. Fantastic. That's a great, a great opportunity to help fix the environment. The second one is make sure that the environment that you're in is, is not too cluttered. You know, I look at Jill and I know Jill's personality and, and she's got her guitar there and I see that. And that's a great, a great opportunity to bring up a discussion or to talk about it or have a customer ask you about it. That's perfectly okay, but you don't want it to be messy or dirty. You want to make sure that anything in the view is, is kind of tight and organized and that it's not going to be too distracting. That in addition to that, you want to make sure that you have the appropriate hardware. So this is that you have a good video camera or, or web camera. And they don't need to be very expensive. In our office, we use just a Logitech camera. All of our employees have pretty much the same one. It's a C270 Logitech camera. They're like $25. It's, it doesn't need to get very complicated. But I'll tell you that that brings up a really good question. A lot of consumers that we deal with and have dealt with for many years say, oh, I don't have a video camera. I don't have a way to do a virtual meeting. And for many of them, they believe that to be true, right up until you ask the question of, do you happen to have your cell phone with you or a tablet? Or do you happen to have a laptop nearby? Because the answer for one of those three questions is almost always yes. And if that's the case, you could, and many of us are using one of those devices right now to be part of this meeting. And so that just proves that they can do video and that they can see your desktop and that they can do it very simply. But because the typical consumer doesn't do it in their business life, they don't think about how they can accomplish it when you ask them if you want, if they want to do a virtual meeting instead. So instead of asking our customers if they want to do virtual meetings, we typically say, do you have one of those three devices nearby? If so, would it be okay if I showed you some stuff on my screen? So we invite them first to tell us if they have something and then second, if they'd like to see some information on our screen that will help them make a good decision. It's just all about how you frame it and preface it. The, the other hardware piece that I think is really important is having a good, either a good quiet environment or a good set of headphones. I've got these little cheapy $20 Skull Candy in-ear earbuds with the, the, they actually have the little microphone built in. These are great for like an iPad or off of your cell phone. If you're using a desktop computer or maybe a laptop, something a little more robust like these Logitech USB headset are, are pretty nice to have simply because they are noise-canceling both for the microphone and they cover both ears, meaning that you can block out any distractions you might find in, in your environment. But you don't need to have those things. I mean, obviously we're on this call today and I'm not using headsets. I'm just using the microphone and the speakers in my office to, to be on this call and speak in here. In addition to the proper setup for being able to go virtual, which is what we're talking about. The second thing is the tools you need to be successful in doing it. And so I would hope that everybody here is using some sort of client management system that could be as simple as maybe the old-school Grantham One Card system. As long as you can track your information and kind of follow up in an appropriate manner. For, for our office, we use a insurance-specific CRM platform that helps us manage our clients, make sure we follow up with them and do so in kind of a timely manner. And, and actually I will share my screen here. And I'll show you my our platform. So this is a good example of our CRM that we prefer to use. And you'll notice that it keeps me on track. It tells me what things are behind in red, what things are current in green. White typically means it's in the future, so it's very visual. It helps me very, know very quickly what I'm doing and who I need to call next and what kind of tasks I need to take care of. It allows me to quote and to follow up. And it makes it very easy for me to do the things that I need to do. Another one that we use in our office, we also use a chat platform. And you can actually see here that we've got our staff on it. We actually have some of our biggest partners on it as well. It alerts me if, if I have a message with, by highlighting it here. It also sends me push notifications on my mobile devices. I have chat with me all the time. It's not, it's actually not uncommon for me to be chatting with an employee or with one of our partners very late at night, early in the morning. I know Suzanne's tagged me in, in text messages before and gotten responses at probably, you know, midnight or one in the morning, local time, and then still continue the conversation at four, five, six in the morning again. So, you know, part of that is being connected and, and the fact that I don't sleep all a lot. But, but the point is, is that these are tools that make it easy to communicate, not only with your clients, but then with your staff, which is a big part of going virtual. Having your staff, whether that's a staff of you or a staff of you and an assistant, or whether that's an office like ours where we have about 65, 70 employees. You have to have a way to effectively communicate with them and to utilize those tools. One of the things that we started doing, especially once we started taking our, our business more virtual, is that we ended up utilizing our video cameras to do internal calls. So think about the, the difference here, right? So if your office and your team is, is now dispersed and they're working from home, it's a great opportunity for you to use the same type of technology that you would use with your clients and prospects to stay top of mind with them and to communicate with them and add some of that human interaction and human element back into what would have been face-to-face in-office meetings. So it's really critical to make sure that you're, you're helping them be successful in doing what they're doing. And then there's what I kind of mentioned before, which is having the ability to turn it off. I'm not very great at that, but you have to take the time to do it. You can't work all the time. You need to give your, your staff permission. You got to give yourself permission to, to turn off all the technology once in a while. Go outside, walk around. You know, kind of recharge the batteries, especially now where we're kind of cloistered in to our homes and, and maybe not having a lot of human interaction and getting outside, getting some sun, get some vitamin D, whatever it is. You, you got to do, do that on occasion to help yourself stay effective and stay sharp. I think from that point, the, the other couple of things that come up is, once you have the technology, once you have your environment, right, and once you have your staff communicating effectively, then the, the fourth one, and, and it becomes much more important, especially as you start talking to consumers, but it's really the fourth in the order of getting there, is making sure you look the part, that you're ready to go. And we're all wearing different clothing today. We're all, we all have different kind of business styles and that's great. Whatever that business style is, make sure that it's not changed simply because you're sitting at home. If you, if you, I know Brian, Brian, I know that you meet a lot of clients the way that you're dressed right now that you'll, but I also know that you dress to the nines. And so depending on what, what that situation is, you need to be prepared. And so I would tell you that I, my, my routine is whether I'm working in-office or remote, I get up at pretty much the same time every day. I get dressed, I get dressed in whatever I would wear if I was going to the office or not. When I'm setting up client meetings, whether that's on a weekday or a weekend, it doesn't matter. I'm still going to be dressed the same way. I'm still going to be ready to go. I'm still going to be ready to rock and roll. Because you're still, at the end of the day, you're still a professional and you're still trying to communicate to your clients that you're a professional, even though maybe it's and you're still trying to communicate to your clients that you're professional, even though maybe it's a little distance today. Um, and so it's important to keep as much of your regular routine, your regular sales process in place as you make the transition. It's going to make you significantly more successful. And it's going to help your customers who, especially the ones who already know you and work with you. They're going to realize that you're prepared and ready to go and that this has not shaken your ability to help them. And that may be the most important thing as, as we uh, move through the next couple of months. I'll, I'll tell you, we have been lucky. Um, we've been prepared. Um, and luck favors the prepared, I think, as they say. Uh, and I, I love Mike Tyson's quote about everyone's got a plan until they get punched in the face, right? And so for a lot of us, we had a business plan. We knew what we were going to go through this year. We knew what we were gonna uh, do, or at least what we thought we were going to do from a business perspective, and then we all got punched in the face. And so the way that you just determine how successful somebody is, is what happens after they got punched in the face. And a lot of businesses got punched in the face and, and classic Mike Tyson style, they went to the mat and they stayed down. And unfortunately, they're gonna stay down. But that means for those of us who don't go down or, or get back up, if we did go down, that we have a huge, huge opportunity to pick up clients, market share, and new capabilities that we can use with our clients going forward. And that's what we've decided to do. It's been really interesting. I, we've uh, actually taken many, many phone calls uh, through our PNC agency that we have uh, about local agencies not being responsive, nobody answering the phone and no one there to help them. And can we, can we take care of them? And I know that as of yesterday, we had done over a hundred BORs for existing coverage in just the last two weeks. Think about that. That's a hundred new households that have moved over simply because we're able to answer the phone, answer their questions and take care of them when their current agent or agency wasn't. That's a huge opportunity. That's a, that's an agency-changing opportunity that can make it so that you are able to thrive while everyone else is, is struggling. So think about how you can do that. Um, the way that that happened though was interesting. We actually decided to jump on marketing. This is another thing that you gotta do now. It's hard for them to know that you're in business unless you tell them you're in business. It's hard for them to know that you're able to help them and that you're even there unless you tell them. And so we've spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks expanding our marketing. Um, both individual st- style marketing of just getting on social media and being active, commenting, um, posting in different forums and chat groups, talking to our existing clients and, and to our friends and just letting them know that we're here. If they have questions, if they're struggling, that we'll, we'll help them. Uh, and it can be everything from something insurance-related to uh, I've, I've done a similar presentation to this now three or four times, one-on-one or in small groups, helping them get set up and telling them what things they need to buy and how they need to set up their space so that they can keep their businesses in, in uh, up and going to. Think about the resource that you're able to be simply because you're prepared and you have the tools and the capabilities and you actually can point them in the right direction. Um, and consumers don't forget that stuff. They, they remember who helped them. They remember who took care of them and they remember who was there when nobody else was. And so if you want to grow your market and you want to grow your market share in your business, I, I will tell you right now, there's nothing more powerful than being active right now and helping the consumer take care of the things they need to take care of. Um, I, I know Suzanne, you and I talked about maybe opening this up to questions. I'd love to do that. Um, we can talk all day long about how we're generating leads um, in today's market and give some specific examples. We can talk about how we're utilizing our technology. Um, how we actually are doing some of the online presentations and quoting. Uh, we can go anywhere from even just how we set up the, the technology with our internal staff. I'm happy to answer any and every question I can. And I, uh, I told you I would give you an hour and I think I'm about fifteen minutes into that. So I'll spend the next forty-five minutes answering as many questions as I can for anyone who wants to actually get help.
That's great, Ryan. Uh, Suzanne, I'm not sure if you want to chime in at this point, but I think together we could maybe tag team some of the questions. We've actually had some Ryan coming up. But I, I just want to say before we even break into the question side of things, uh, your demeanor and the way you're delivering this presentation, I think should resonate with everybody on this call. This is how we should be behaving in a time of crisis where it looks like this is a person who is prepared and ready to do business and make sure we're talking people off of the ledge if necessary. So really appreciate, um, appreciate the delivery and the platform. Uh, there's a question here from Gary Albert and he just, uh, it's, it's pretty general in terms of learning a little bit more about Insure Ten. Could you talk a little bit about maybe how you landed with that particular program and did you do some other work with others?
Yeah, so that, that platform, it's actually insure IO or Insureo. Um, just so you're familiar or capable there. We actually, uh, and just full disclosure, we had some input in the development of that platform. Um, we were very closely with the development team to help them kind of get into the insurance space. And so we got a lot of customizations that we wanted built into it from the gate, out of the gate. But it's by, by all means, there's other tools that are really effective. I mean, whether it's Insureo or something like Radius, um, even using Salesforce or some other common platform. I would tell you, it really depends what type of business model you have. Um, we're very much in life insurance and in risk product-specific. So we focus most of our time in that space. Uh, the Insureo platform's tremendous for that. But if I was a, an investment advisor, it probably wouldn't be the, the best tool. Because I would need to have, you know, the account information for all the investments. So something like maybe a juncture or a redtail would come into play and be a lot more effective, at least in that regard. If I'm a PNC agency, I'm probably looking at something like AMS three sixty or um, Applied uh, Epic or TAM platforms or maybe Easy Links. So there, there's a lot of tools out there and I, instead of getting focused maybe on which one is best, I think with, the question is really which type of business model are you running? Because that's then again, a narrow down your choices. Um, but a, as a kind of a general default, if you're looking at an insurance-based CRM platform, you want to make sure it can support the business model you have, the type of products and services that you offer. And then you want to make sure that it has as much automation built in as possible and, and, and hopefully is, is as turnkey as possible. Um, you know, a lot of CRMs are very capable, but they make you build out every single component and every single follow-up process that's in there. And that's fantastic if that's your forte and, and you have the resources and time to do that. If not, then something that's a little more turnkey. And again, like an Insureo or a Radius or Redtail where a lot of that stuff is kind of built in with a default um, setup. That's going to help you move a lot quicker. Um, in addition to that, I would make sure that it has uh, integrations with the quoting tools that you're already using. You don't want to have, especially now, you don't have to learn how to do business virtually and then also how to use a, a totally different and new set of tools to do it. So uh, the, the least disruption you can create with the tools that you decide to use or the ones that you're already using today, um, is going to be the best course of action.
That's great, Ryan. Uh, we, we knew that you would have uh, quite a, a wealth of knowledge regarding this. Um, another question, looks like it came in uh, from possibly Ryan. Uh, how are you generating leads? And it doesn't necessarily have to be directly to how you do it. Maybe we can talk about you and then also maybe some, some opportunities for others who are just dipping their toe in the water or jumping into the deep end of the pool, how they can get this rolling.
Sure. Uh, generating leads is, I mean, at, at the end of the day, or maybe at the beginning of the day, leads are the most important thing that any of us as professionals need to grow and, and have our business threat, right? We need the people to talk to, we need prospects uh, to talk to. And so how, how do you get those? And I would tell you, there's, there's a bunch of different ways. And it again, it depends on how mature your, your current marketing efforts already are. Um, but I would tell you the first and foremost one that we're seeing be effective right now, and think about these numbers. Think about how much time people spent on social media before all of this took place. And I just saw a recent report that came out from Facebook that Facebook is experiencing an eight hundred plus percent increase in users, uh, users right now. So if you think of how big Facebook was before, and now it's eight hundred percent more engagement today. That's huge. And it's people who are out there and they're asking questions and trying to get help and trying to figure out what everyone else is doing to survive. And so there's a huge opportunity just with Facebook to get involved in the conversation. Um, I would caution you though, that's not a get involved in the conversation by saying, hey, I sell insurance, buy my stuff because nobody cares. But if you approach it with, hey, here's what I'm doing and here's how that's impacting my business and here's how I'm helping my clients and customers. The, the natural response to that is, oh, well Jill, what do you actually do? And soon as somebody asks the question, it gives you permission to answer it. I help people take care of their financial needs. I help them protect their families, their homes, whatever it is. And so think about it like a cocktail party. And I've used this analogy for probably fifteen years now. If you're going into a cocktail party and at the cocktail party, the very first thing you do when you get introduced to somebody is say, hi, I'm Ryan. I sell insurance. How much do you want to buy? That person is going to run away. And as they run away, they're going to tell everybody else as they go, hey, that Ryan guy, he sells insurance. Don't talk to him. He's crazy. Right? And so you have to approach it with the, the same way that you would approach a true cocktail party interaction. Well, yeah, my name's Ryan. Jill, so what do you do? How do you do that? That's pretty interesting. And the, the natural response for everybody is to do what? To then ask you what you do and how you do it. For your clients, for your prospects, for your friends, they probably already know or well, you think they already know, but the reality is, is they don't. They know you do something to do with investments or insurance, but they don't know how that applies to them. So take the opportunity to get involved, answer questions, um, start communicating. And you'll be surprised at how many business opportunities just come out of that. And it's not like you got a lot of other stuff going on right now anyways, probably. Take the time and grow your social media uh, influence right now. LinkedIn's a great one. If you're a business, um, if you're in the business market, you probably should take this time to start connecting with all of your business customers and all your business prospects and the people that they know. And then you should say, hey, I know that everyone's a little slow. I'd love it if you would endorse me. Give me a recommendation. Tell people how great we are. Tell me how we can help you with your business, right? The, the, again, everyone's in the same boat. They're all looking for something to do with their time and they all just found that they have an abundance of it. Because guess what? No sports, no kid events, no school stuff. Um, not going into the office and businesses is slowed down. So most of us have way more time to do the things that we used to cram into, uh, you know, the eight hours that we called work. We now are doing over twenty hours because there's nothing else going on. And so you can take that time and that opportunity to really be impactful in social media. The easiest way, it doesn't require any money, just requires something you've got an abundance of time. And it requires you to be, be yourself, be a little natural and don't turn it into marketing. Turn it into conversations.
Yeah, and I think, and I know we get this conver- we get this question all the time, but it's the, it's that understanding the storytelling factor and allowing people to have a, you know, what, what, what really does play well is to say, you know, so-and-so called me the other day and here's the issue they were having, you know, and tell, and just literally talk about that from a storytelling perspective.
Yeah, and, and social proof um, is, is what you're talking about there. Social proof is huge. And what's, what's great is if you help one of your clients and they're having a problem, or you help one of your friends and they're struggling and you help them, take the opportunity to ask for permission to use their name when you post the story. And say, hey, I'll, I'll make it generic as possible so it doesn't embarrass you or it's not going to reveal any information we wouldn't want to share. But I'd like to be able to tag you in the post because soon as you tag a real live person, somebody else, everybody knows the story wasn't made up. And social proof is worth ten or twenty times more uh, than just the story by itself. So take the story, ask for the permission and then use the social proof aspect of it to bring that in. Because especially when you tag them, if you keep it generic enough and you keep it um, in the appropriate kind of professional approach, I can almost guarantee that the person that you got permission from and that you ultimately tag in the post, that they're going to come back over the top of you and then tell everyone how awesome you are and how much you helped them. And again, that social proof element compounds the effectiveness of your marketing. And it's going to make it so that you automatically get the value of the original story, how I helped somebody. You tag them and then you have somebody else saying how awesome they are. And more often than not, you'll get three or four other clients or prospects or friends who jump in and say, yeah, that person is awesome. Um, if you want to see a good example of that, I actually will um, will send a link if you want to share it. Um, for something on Facebook, it was a real estate agent who's in our area. He's one of my friends. I love the guy. And somebody had reported him for having too many signs up, uh, for like an open house. You know, being petty. Now, this was obviously a couple of weeks ago. It happened right as the coronavirus was kind of kicking in and we were getting all locked down. And so I just jumped in there and said, man, this guy's awesome. Uh, but he does have way too many signs. And so we had gone around the neighborhood and taken pictures of every single one of his for, um, home for sale signs that had a sold pit, a sold sign on it as well. And there was like a dozen of them. And then so we did that and just like, yeah, he's horrible. Look at all these signs. I can't figure out what's going on here. Somehow they're always say, sold though. And for a real estate agent, like that's social proof. That's perfect for him. He, and so think about what I did there and that, that post ended up with like over a hundred comments. Well, he came back in and tagged me and said, no, if you need insurance, Ryan's the guy. There's nobody better than him. So I got the benefit of doing something nice and he came back over the top and did something nice for me in return, right? People want to repay you when you do something good for them. So let them, give them the opportunity, especially on social media. So that's how I would generate leads if I were you right now and wanted to just get involved and don't know what to do.
Yeah, it's a, it, it's a ripe environment right now, Ryan. So I'm before we, I'm going to take another question to you, but before I do, I just want to let everyone know that uh, I, I understand that our timing is a little bit, we're going a little bit long. We could sit here for a long time to get every bit of information from Ryan we could. So obviously if you need to step off, please do that. We will have this recorded and it will be available to you. Uh, and thank you for joining us. We're not going away. We're going to stay here with Ryan for a moment. Uh, we do have another question that came in and this has to do with maybe you can talk a little bit to hiring and looking for the right people who would actually thrive in this environment. Um, you have some thoughts on that?
Uh, too many probably. So, you know, it's interesting. Um, we had about forty percent of our staff before all of this that worked either remote, full-time or part of the time. Uh, so our stuff, staff, like I said, it's called sixty-five employees. Um, about forty percent of them work remote, full or part-time. Uh, and so when this, we, we made the decision Friday, three weeks ago now, to send everybody home. We knew kind of that what was going to happen. It was right at the end of um, midterms here locally for the high schools. And I have a couple of friends who are on the school board and one of them had let me know about six in the morning that morning on Friday that uh, that they were going to close the school district for at least the next couple of weeks uh, following midterms, which was a week early for spring break basically. And, or two weeks early, I guess, for spring break. And so um, knowing that it was going to impact my employees, we made the decision to go remote and send everybody remote. So by the end of the day, Friday, we had uh, less than ten people in our office and by mid-morning Monday, we had less than five. So if you think about that, we, we sent almost everybody remote in basically a twenty-four hour period. Um, and that's a testament, I think, to two things. One, the technology and the capabilities. But two, it's really a testament to the staff. And so what I would tell you is if you are hiring and especially if you have current staff and they are uh, struggling with this, then maybe your staff is not the right folks. Um, but most people, if you give them the opportunity to work remote, you'll be surprised that they actually are more productive, not less. Um, that assumes that you give them the right environment and the right parameters to do it in. But being remote has a lot of advantages uh, when it comes to hiring and workload. So a couple of things to think about when you're hiring somebody, especially in an environment where, you know, today we're remote. And in the future, I mean, I, I feel bad for commercial real estate because I think when all this is said and done, that a lot of commercial real estate is going to end up not ever being filled back up. Because it's a lot easier to send people remote. It's a lot less expensive at the end of the day. But you have to have the right personality and the right people when you do that. And the way that we typically look at that is, are they driven? And are they able to follow uh, kind of the checklist of tasks that we want them to do without a lot of management? If, if they're driven and they're kind of dedicated and able to follow through on their assigned tasks when they're in the office, they're probably going to be just as effective, if not more effective, when they work remote. Uh, but you have to have some parameters in place to kind of manage that. Uh, one of the things that we do, excuse me, is we look at uh, the number of inbound and outbound phone calls. excuse me, is we look at uh the number of inbound and outbound phone calls all of our employees make every day, how many went to voicemail. Um, because they're on chat, uh, if a manager chats you and you don't respond in a relatively quick timeframe, there's probably gonna be some questions about why did that take so long, right? Um, and there's also the activity, you know, from our dashboards. I can see if somebody's behind and inside of our CRM platform, if they're meeting all their assigned tasks. I can see it very visually, very quickly. It's amazing how well a screenshot of a a CRM dashboard with all their assigned tasks and what's behind, uh, how how quickly uh um that changes when you screenshot it and send it to them in chat and say, hey, what's up? Usually by the time they respond to you, that they go, oh, no, I was uh, it's good, now take a look, right? So uh you you have to be a little more diligent in managing your people. Um, but it doesn't have to be heavy-handed, and I would tell you, if it is heavy-handed, it's probably not gonna work well. So I know that wasn't direct to how you hire, it was more how you, once you've hired, how you manage those people. And I think that that's more important than maybe the hiring practices because your needs are gonna be different than mine.
Let let's just take this one more shift, and then we're gonna bring this to a close. Uh, when you, a lot of people out here have been dealing with folks that have been in the industry a long time. And it's easy to hire to a younger person who has been born and raised on a a technology system and world. So that would make sense clearly. But there is a shift for folks who have been doing this a long time, old-school, old ways. And I've seen some real positive change for our for people in in our firm who are able to manage us. But can you speak to that just a little bit, how we can get them to turn maybe a little bit more quickly or
Well.
technology?
Yeah, and I I would, I would preface it this way. You don't wanna change? Great. Don't. I I'm happy to take over your clients. I'm happy to take over your business, and someone or someone like me is gonna be happy to do the same. There there's a real threat right now, which is that if you can't do business virtually, especially in a time when it's the only option, that that says a lot, right? And and unfortunately, it says a lot in in the negative. Um, yes, you can hire young people, and yes, you can hire someone who's tech-savvy. But at the end of the day, you as the principal or you as the primary uh salesperson in your office or the owner of the company, you gotta take some responsibility there and around that yourself. Um, I would tell you that at the, uh, as you kind of work through this as well, that um there's there's a couple of big issues, right? Issue number one is today, if I want to write an application for life insurance, and I want to send that into an insurance company, half the carriers in the last two weeks have said, we're not taking paper. And then another large chunk of them have said, and if it requires an exam and you're in states like California, Pennsylvania, New York, et cetera, where the states are on lockdown and the examiners physically cannot go to someone's home, how are you gonna do that? So the carriers are saying, you can't submit paper because we don't have a way to process it, and we don't want paper that people have touched coming to our office and having other people touch it because we don't know what's on it. And we and consumers are saying, I don't want an examiner coming to my home, and I don't want anybody, you know, that potentially bringing in a virus, right, or getting one I may have. And then then think about the flip side. We we've received a bunch of announcements recently, and um I think uh Suzanne, you probably have a link from the our website. We've got two lists. One is all the different carrier changes. We've been trying to track all of them and what they're doing, what all the vendors are doing. And two is the non-med processes and options that are available. Feel free to share those. I don't care where you send the business. It's just good resources and information. Um, but but think about that. If you can't get an exam done and you can't get APS records ordered, and if you can't have a paper application submitted, oh, and now the the last step of this is carriers are now saying, and we don't have the capabilities to issue paper policies anymore because the people who used to print that stuff down in the basement aren't in our building? Think about how your business model just got totally turned upside down. So whether you want to change or not, if you wanna be in business, you have to. So that means you have to use electronic policy and application systems. You have to be able to submit it non-med, and you have to be able to utilize the carrier's underwriting processes, which can only be reached by submitting an electronic application. And you have to be able to avoid the exam and the APS. And so that means that you fundamentally have to shift how your business is, if that's life insurance. And guess what? Long-term care, disability, annuities, none of those are any different right now. And in fact, some of them are even worse. Uh, and on the property and casualty side, same thing. If you need to do an inspection, guess what? Not happening. So think about how what's happening right now is changing the industry. And then look at what the carriers are doing respond to respond. Everyone knows, by the way, that Northwest Mutual yesterday uh rolled out that they'll do five million dollars of of coverage, permanent or term on with no exam, right? Five million dollars. It used to be amazing when a carrier would do half a million or a million. And now one of the most conservative insurance companies in the in the business said, we'll do five million. And they're not the only ones. So think about how what's happened in the marketplace is going to fundamentally shift the way that business is done in the future. And you have this really short window to fumble through and get and get the benefit of the doubt because everyone's kind of fumbling through. But when we come out the other side of this in a couple of months, six weeks, whatever it is, and the whole industry de- decides, guess what, we're gonna keep going this way, we wanted to anyways, and now we're gonna force it because we made you do it for the last two or three months? How is your business going to survive and thrive if you don't wanna change? It's not. So take that for what it's worth.
And and in fact, Ryan, I think that is a perfect way to end. You know, how how are you going to be a part of this if you're not willing to move, if you're not willing to change with it? Yeah, maybe maybe everybody, time to revisit, who moved my cheese? The cheese has moved.
It has moved.
Everybody. Well, Ryan, thank you so much, and I have to say that we have a number of folks that would love to hear from you again. Perhaps we can have you back to do a special session, uh, something that is maybe uh particularly driven by a lot of questions that are coming in. That would be amazing. Um, until then, uh, I will say we'll be back on Monday with our next town hall meeting. Ryan, you have been uh an absolute joy having today. You are a treasure as a NAF- uh treasure as a NAFA member. You are very much appreciated, and I thank you, everyone, for being on this call. We'll see you again next week. Uh, let's go make some things happen for our clients and our communities. Take care.
Thank you.